Welcome to the Fail Forward Podcast. The purpose of this podcast is change the negative stigma around failure into a positive. Failure is only a negative if we do not learn from it and we give up. Welcome back to the Fail Forward Podcast. Today, I've got the privilege of having Daniel Fitz Henry, the Southampton councillor with us today to share his business experience and what he's, the great things he's doing with Southampton Council. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you, Henry.
So it's great to have you on board on this episode. Just tell me, how did you start out in business and how did you get to where you are now?
Yeah, thank you. So I was very lucky. I started work about nine, 10 years old with my family. They run a sort of retail fruit and veg market stall. So there I was at nine, washing lemons, serving the customers and was very excited, be jumping it out of lorries early in the morning and seeing all this activity. So I had an early exposure to business and my nan sort of said to me, just make sure you look after the customer and they'll keep coming back. And that sort of stayed in my memory. So yeah, and from there I was involved in the family business. And then I started a first business on my own and then sort of about the same time. So my political and business journey on my own has been about 20 years to get to this stage with different things going on. I started early, which has left lots of room for failure in the middle and learning. And yeah, I've just grown through it really like everybody. You start somewhere and you go, okay, where do you want to go? And you evolve in your thinking and you meet people along the way. But I've been in, you know, I've run a renewable company, I've run a property business, a lettings business, food distribution business. I've been involved in multiple different things all over the place. So it's been an interesting journey and ran politics and business at the same time.
Wow, amazing. So you were growing up around that entrepreneurial family. So when you then left school, did you go and do further education or did you go straight into business?
Well, I did. So I should have said also, my dad was self-employed all the time, starting new things, jumping around from different business opportunities too. So yeah, so I went, well, actually I grew up here in Chalonsford and went to school in Southampton. And then I went to Barton Pepperell College, which was great fun. But post-college, I went to university for a year. After about four weeks at Southampton Uni, I was like, no, this is not for me. Classroom learning. College was great fun. Turn up, have fun, do a bit of work, learn my own way and then party and see people and chat. Uni, they were like, oh, you've got to turn up to this lecture, you've got to do this. I'm like, no, thanks. The entrepreneurial non-conformist in me of doing things didn't come out too well. So formal education sort of stopped at college, spent my first year at uni, left mentally after the first four weeks, but physically after the first year and then learnt my way from there.
Yep, excellent. And so what was your first business?
In renewable energies. I mean, you look at these things, you look back, I was 19, a mate of mine said, oh, I've got this idea selling solar panels. I didn't know anything about it other than I thought, well, we changed the world, we can do some good, we can earn some money. And off we went. That was pretty much about as much in planning that went into it. You know, tens of thousands later, experienced a few challenges and bumps along the way, but managed to sort of scale that over a few years. I think we got to about four or 500,000 over a few years. I just realised that the big learning lesson from that business was that I needed a strong team around me. And it was very much me on my own in the beginning, as it is, and that didn't work for me. I'm not sure I learnt that lesson properly until a few times later. But yeah, the first, first business was in renewables, based in Southampton and Bournemouth, selling solar thermal packages across the south coast of England. 19, 20 year old driving around sort of meeting people, all these people much older, they're all in suits. I was like, oh, this is, this is very interesting. And that was my first exposure to owning my own business. But I'd still worked the previous 10 years in the family business and probably from about 14, 15, took more responsibility for the running of that business, the financing, the growing of it, the market, the sort of customer components. So yeah, but that was my first one on my own.
Yeah. And so knowing what you know now and everything that you've learned, is there anything you tell your younger self now when you're running that first business?
Well, the, one of the benefits of experience is you go, we'll do this. But one of the dis-benefits is I would never have this experience had I not have done those things. So you can sort of look at this from a very utopian awe, you know, would I have done this and would I have done? I just wouldn't have had any of that fun and learning. I think that the key bit that I now remind myself endlessly, and of course there's more to this story, which we can talk about later, is know why you're in the room, what value you bring and who you're working with, you know, what is it you're trying to achieve? What's the why driving it? And what value are you bringing to the party? And if you can get those things nailed down, you can make a lot more impact. Back then I was like, yeah, I want to change the world, let's get on with it. Fairness, we did a bit, but it was as much bad as it was good.
I definitely feel that. The episode we just, before this, we actually talked about sort of self-development versus going out there and getting stuff done. And as you rightly say, you know, maybe some, if you knew what you knew now, you might not have ever got out there and got stuff done. So you're very right in what you're saying there. So what happened next? What was the next part of the chapter?
Well, in, so this, let's sort of about summer 2008, spring 2008, recession, obviously financial crisis was coming. We were selling renewable energy packages on finance more so then, finance markets were drying up. And I met this guy and he said, you need to buy property. I was 22 at the time and I thought, yeah, okay, well, whatever. So he gave me this book, I read it, I thought, oh, I can do this. So it was one business, as life happens, there's one door shuts, another one opens. I got elected to council that year as well in 2008. And so I started borrowing some money from people to go and buy businesses. September 2008 came, Lehman Brothers. Everybody was leaving the market and I was going in. Naivety is a beautiful thing, isn't it? And again, there's this whole piece about try not to be too experienced because actually the will and the focus drives you through things. I was just going out bidding on properties and some of them I was, people were saying to me, well, you could have this for half the asking price. So I thought, well, I'll bid half the asking price. And then they accepted. And I remember the first acceptance of a property, they went, your offer's been accepted on a one-bedroom flat, which I paid 57,000 for, it was on for 95,000 through the, through the bank. I don't know how it got to that level, I can't really remember. And I went, oh, great. And they said, so who's your solicitor and all these things? I went, oh, oh, I just need to phone you back. I had no idea. So, and then I scaled up buying properties, ran out of deposits and realised that property investment, you know, I was doing well. It took a bit of time to get that underway, but I had a few properties. Went to a few Hampshire Property Network, as they were back then, at the Holiday Inn in Basingstoke. Met Simon Zutshi before he created the Property Investor Network and all of that sort of stuff. And yeah, I was a four or five properties in, like, yeah, good, let's go do this.
Amazing. Love that. Cause yeah, it was a, it was a difficult time. And for now, I've been in property a year and trying to get what they call a BMV below market value deal right now with the market is tough. You just can't get them. So to be in that position, you know, is, that's brilliant. So, so where did it go after that?
Well, I slowly realised that I was buying property and of course I, you know, the people selling were mainly the banks that repossessed. So when I was dealing with a vendor who clearly needed the money, I'd say to them, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to help you because how I need to finance this is, is going to be below the asking price that you need. So as much as in my head, I was young and naive and sort of getting on with it, you know, I was making sure I was feeling a need and not taking advantage of people. So we did, I did that. And then I ran out of deposits and said, right, okay. This, read Rich Dad Poor Dad, read lots of these different books, but this is my asset piece, it's creating some income. But once I've done these properties up and bought them, what am I going to do now? I'm a bit bored. There wasn't enough of a sort of business component to it. It was also very lonely, you know, as you know, doing it on your own. So I thought, right, okay. And then as happens, so my family had been in food, sort of retail, farmers market, street market business, which I'd helped out on, all, you know, turn up one day, sell your wares, go home, turn up the next week, if you like. And I got a phone call from a lady that had a restaurant in the Marlins. And she said, oh, I've been given your number to talk to you about whether you'd supply our restaurant with vegetables and dairy and dry goods. Sorry, vegetables, dairy, salads, bits and pieces. I said, well, it's not really for us, it's not what we do, but I'll come and have a chat with you. So off I go to the Marlins, have this chat with this lady and she said, oh, we need this, need this, we've got this, we need this. So I looked at her and I said, how much are you spending? She said, probably about eight hundred pounds to a thousand pounds a week. I was like, oh, okay. So I was sat there with my little pen, working out how much I could make, how much it was going to cost me, how much time was going to be involved in all this. I thought, this can't be that difficult. So I said, okay, we'll do it, you know, we'll, we'll supply you. My family had a little transit van. I had the book, I had the stock that obviously we usually bought for the retail business, albeit it was different stock. And I thought, she wants it Monday to Saturday, I can do that. So about two hours work in the morning, I could make 20, 30 grand a year probably from this. Okay, fine. Then another shop rang and then another shop rang. And then I was like, hmm, I'm creating a bit of a business here. And we just, I just went with it. So I created a food distribution business, moved to base point down in lower Southampton, little depot. Freezing cold, no gas, sat there in the winter with all this stuff built up. And each week we were getting more customers. The, I was talking to big, big organisations that Hampshire County Council that were supplying the schools with produce and dairy. And over a six-year period from September 2009 till April 2016, sort of scaled to about 50, 60 odd staff. We were peaking out about 80,000, 80 to 85,000 a week of sales from that sort of start point of a thousand or 800. And none of that was planned in the beginning.
From a small seed, from one call.
Yeah. So we sort of scaled from that, that level up, you know, built the business, really got a good reputation for delivering to the customer. It was 24 hours a day, six and a half days a week, fully intense in an industry that was pretty competitive. But long and short, I took on too much, I overstretched myself, I thought I was Superman. We walked on water for a bit and then sank heavily, which was, was fun. But you know, we scaled a good business. Thousands of mistakes, but lot, you know, a fair few good things, right? And we supplied clients all over the south of England, National Trust, Hilton Hotels, Hampshire Schools and a wide range of, a lot of food and beverage outlets, Rick Steins, we helped them open when they opened in Sandbanks. Right the way across from sort of Paul to Chichester, up to London and across to Reading. So.
Amazing. What, what happens from a small seed and that one call? So what were your, say, three biggest learnings from that business?
My biggest learning was understand what I'm good at. One or two things and what I'm not good at, thousands of things. Then get the right people around you that are aligned. So I, my family and I were in a, set this up, there's all they had a holding and we wanted different things and it got very complicated and difficult for all of us, as you know, family businesses can do. And that was really difficult. But I think if you, if you know, if you get, you can only know what you're good at by doing things and learning. You know, you can do some contextual text learning, but actually doing is the learning mechanism. Then surrounding yourself with people who are aligned to your value and your vision. You can get a lot of people aligned to your vision, but they're not always aligned to your values and wants and expectations. So working through that list is quite crucial. And again, you only know it through trying and then things not working and then adapting. And then just understanding that it's all just a flow. You know, the terminology, it's a game, it's not really, it's a game of life. There are going to be moments when you sink really low, but actually the moments of sinking really low, as you said in the beginning, are the moments that you're about to rise really high. But you've got to go low to go high and you've got to go high to go low. Because if you don't, you don't understand. And there's a, I can't remember the chap's name, but there's a, an admiral in the US who trains the Navy SEALs. And I never forget his, his conversation about the Navy SEALs that start and then they start failing in their training. And many of them drop out, but the ones that don't, they start failing and obviously they have to do the same exercises the next day, double, double. He said, the first few weeks, you see these people like near on dead and then something magic happens. The pain and the difficulty and the strain and the overwhelm of all those emotions almost breaks and strengthens them. And if you were looking at a timeline, you see them there, they do that, and then they come back and they overtake the people that were ahead of them. Because they mentally, physically, emotionally and spiritually are wired now to overcome challenges.
Yeah, love that.
And I think for me, the greatest learning lesson was that the deepest, darkest moments are a stone's throw from the highest of points. But you've got to go through it.
Yeah, love that. And again, kind of the theme of this podcast with failing forward, if you're always failing forward and going through those challenges, but you know, keep pushing on, that's when I see the most amount of success, when people don't give up. And that's certainly a trait that I've seen is that that point when people give up, like you say, with those Navy SEALs, then they push past it and then they get the fruits of their, their drive and determination. So absolutely love that, seeing that journey from, from that one call, as you say, one door closes, another one opens. And before you know it, you're running a 50, 60 people business. So, so that's awesome. So where does politics intertwine with this? So you say you got into politics quite early on.
Yeah. And that's, that's, there was always this thing in my back of my head, like, running a business. So the council till 2012 was run by the Conservative team, I was a key from 2008 to 2012. I'd sort of worked my way up in that team and then a key component of it in our final year. Then we lost control. So you're in opposition, so you've got more time. So that energy I was putting into public life, I swung back into my business life. And if you looked at the growth curve on the business, the minute I came out of full-scale politics, the growth curve starts doing this rightly or wrongly. And what, what then happened was is that I sort of went through this period of building the business. Then as a result of the business going into administration and friends of mine buying it and me going to work for them and helping them rebuild it. I got to a stage of that all being blank and there wasn't really much politically going on. And this is where I think staying in the game is crucial, even when you don't know why you are. And it's not that you don't know why you're there, you just haven't got the burning desire in the same way as you have when you know why you're there. So there were probably five years whilst I was running the business and the business went south and things didn't work, where my political stuff was going on in the background, but I wasn't in the driving seat of it and I was involved, but I couldn't articulate probably as well as I can now, why? I knew I wanted to do stuff, I was doing good stuff, but I wasn't in the zone and the lane that I feel like I'm in now. And then I suppose post-personal bankruptcy and everything going and really feeling those emotions, there's some real challenges in my personal life as well, that were a lot more difficult, to be frank, than the sort of business stuff. I sat down, reflected on that why question. And then a series of new opportunities came. And to be frank, when the opportunity to lead the Conservative team in opposition four years ago came, I was in the lowest point I'd ever been. And I remember getting asked, well, you know, will you lead the team? Cause the person who's going to lead it may not be around after May, they might lose their seat, thinking, I can't, you know, I'm sleeping on the floor, my mum lives around the corner. And I was sleeping on the floor on these free cushions in her house with the phone left. As you know, you know, in bankruptcy, you don't have anything left. If it's owned, it's gone. Thinking, how the hell am I going to do this? But I committed to it and did it. And at that moment, a bit like probably with the opportunity that came a few years previously, there was like this window opened up in my mind where I could see actually everything that I'd done had come together to want to be leader of the council. And before then, I fought bad it, but it wasn't like a real burning desire. But the minute this opportunity came, I was like, ah, the, the, the switch went back on and I could feel myself like, ooh. Ooh, actually I'd like to do that. That was four years ago this May and three years ago from last May before we won the council. And I knew at that moment, I was like, right, okay, this is my calling now to do this. So politics became the main thing, but utilising all those business skills, the relationship building, the art of getting things done and the mental and emotional challenge of working through all the things that had gone wrong. Because I was acutely aware, you know, you go into public life, people scrutinise things. What do they think about someone who's been, who's, you know, business success has been failure, if you like, in inverted commas to this point? And so that's where, how I got to sort of four years ago. And then my life for the last four years has been full power, political, wanting to aim to win control of council, which we did last May. So I spent three years focusing on that. And now we're delivering that vision for the last 10 months since last May, that sort of started coming to me in May 2018. So, you know, these things fly about.
Absolutely love that. I mean, you're so right in so many things you're saying, you know, the, the failure, like I said, we've done a few episodes now and I always say that failure is only a negative if you just give up. And you don't learn from it. And obviously you've learnt a hell of a lot in that time and to go on that journey is inspirational. So what is it that do you think within yourself that got you to a point where you just didn't give up? You know, back in 2016, when you're staying on your mum's floor, did you think, do you know what, I'm just going to give up, I'm just going to go and get a job? What, what was it that was really driving you to want to take that role within the council as well?
Yeah. And I, I, this is, I think at our lowest moments, I was very lucky, which then led to a very painful scenario. That in my deepest, darkest moments in my business, someone entered my life that shone a light on and reminded me who I was. And the challenge for me is and was that later, you know, a couple, a year or so later, when bankruptcy came as well and the opportunity came, the reason I didn't give up is I made a commitment to myself and said, heaven, high water or hell, or whatever you throw at me, I'm going to do this. And my, I'm going to do this is I'm going to commit to this role to do what's right, what I believe, you know, I'm being asked to do from whatever our belief in a higher power. For me, the, the pain entered me into a mindset of understanding there is something much greater in us than just us. And I found that in those dark moments. And from that I had a, if you do, you know, commit to doing what you don't believe you can do, what you, I don't believe you can do, commit to doing what you don't know how you're going to do and all the answers will come. And so I was absolutely determined when I felt that, that I was going to do that. And I did that because in the darkest moments, sort of a year or so before that, someone had sort of entered my life and shined a light on, on me and reminded me who I was and what I was capable of. And I think the key bit for all of us, when we're in the dark space, we have to have someone who can see in us the thing that we've forgotten how to see. Because if we don't have that, albeit sometimes it comes to you and sometimes you can have epiphanal moments, it's very difficult. And I was very blessed to have that. And I made a commitment to myself that if that person entered my life to help me at that moment, that I'm going to do the same for anyone else, that I enter their life for whatever reason, whether I know I am or not, to help them. And that's what motivates me in my political role, because I see my role as leader of the council, as chairman of a city, of driving this city forward, is to say, at the moment you need us, we will be there. Now, if you need us for a difficult reason, we will help you. If you need us because you want to grow your business and you're not sure who to talk to, or you, you've got an idea and it's getting stuck, then we'll help you too. But if you need us because you're on, you're there and you're facing abyss there, then we will, we can't do it for you, but we will be there to say to you, remember who you are. And that, that's what drove me and what continues to drive me. And there were moments, I spent four years not really having any money, not really having a job, messing around with stuff, trying to do this political stuff, recovering from bankruptcy, still owing my family money and going, I have all these commercial skills, but I'm spending all this time giving it back to the city in a way that doesn't pay me bluntly. And that fear through my mind was, how are you ever going to get out of this scenario? How am I ever going to afford to, because you know, I get a small allowance for my role and I'm, I'm now in a position where I'm reasonably looked after. But there's no continuity with that. Politics is, is not, not an income strategy, if you like. So it was always like, how, how am I going to square all these things? But I just said, I'm going to commit to it. And I've been very, very lucky and grateful that people have helped me. And, and as I say, my sort of driving ambition now and purpose is that I will help them when they need it.
Yeah, absolutely love that. And it's inspirational and I love the transparency that you've got with all of this. It's great to have somebody leading that's got that experience and everything you're sharing. So I just want to take you right back. So where did, were your family into politics? Where did the politics part of it come from?
Well, my grandparents ran the business. And my mum's side, that's mum's side of the family and I worked with them. But I live with my grandparents at the weekend because I was, I was sort of run, going to work with them. Or my nan ran the business operationally and my grandad looked after all the finances. And my grandad was incredibly intelligent, self-made sort of intelligence, very politically opinionated, let's put it that way. So every Sunday, as a young chap, I'd go around the road and buy the mail on Sunday so that he could read it. And then the politics show would come on and then BBC South, very routine sort of, he would sit in his chair, I would sit here watching the TV with him. And so I was exposed to all of that. But I must admit, I used to look at him sometimes and go, okay, it's all right talking about all this stuff. Well, what are we going to do? You know, and you'll probably know this, small business owners and certainly in the market environment have lots of opinions on things. And so I said, okay, right guys, you know, if we've got all these opinion on things, well, we can't just sit here and moan, we've got to do something. So I think that sort of started the, the want to do something, but the political exposure, which actually my grandad and all that side of the family were all Labour Party supporters. And so, you know, I'm a Conservative elected, but I've started it sort of in one political background and transitioned, if you like. So that's how I started getting exposure. And then when I was at school, I was elected as the first member of the youth parliament, which was basically a body set up nationally. So I represented the city age 14, 15. And that was in 2001, something like that. That got me into, wow, what's this? It was non-political, but it was just exposed. It was a first beginning. We were off to the House of Commons, talking to these people, sat in the chairs, getting interviews with the BBC. Hugh Edwards, I remember doing an interview with us. So I was kind of in this environment. I'm very lucky to be in that. So that's where that started. And these two pillars of my life, business and politics, have sort of done this over the years. Whereas I probably would say for the first time, I kind of understand my value in how I can add to both of them. And it's taken me 20 years to work that out.
But that's amazing because you've, you've got the right mix, you've had the business experience and then a mix with the politics. You know, that's how you can really help Southampton. And, you know, I absolutely love what you're doing for Southampton right now. The whole Get Southampton Moving has been really, you know, it's caught my eye and I'm sure it's caught a lot of businesses in Southampton's eye because it really means a lot to be looking at the infrastructure and looking at how making the, making the, the city work. And I love what you said earlier about, you know, looking at your why and when you were at your darkest hour. Cause certainly when I was at my darkest hour, before my business went under, all I wanted was, you know, all the nice shiny things. And actually, when it went under, I realised that what I want to do is help people. And it's amazing how you find that. And I'd just like to say as well, you say you're lucky, but I always believe that we all make our own luck. So I think that's some, I definitely take my hats off to you to get to where you are now. So on that note of, of what you're doing in Southampton, so do you want to share with the audience, you know, your plan and what you're doing right now in your role? Because it is, it's great what you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, Get Southampton Moving, the slogan either came from a meditation or it came from a member of my team and I can't remember which one. And we have this debate now and again, where I was like, well, where did we come up with this slogan? But the principle behind it is, is we have a, a city with so much talent and opportunity in it. You look around, whether you're a developer building stuff or you're a business owner, whether you're in the public sector and you want to expand your base and help people. It's like an untapped multiple series of gold mines sort of sat there. But for years, everyone's looked at one another and gone, this is a great gold mine. And I go, yes. And they go, wouldn't it be great? And you go, yes, you know what comes next, guys? We, we sort of, you know, untap it. And what Gets Southampton Moving is about is going, we've got a gold mine, let's get on and do it. Let's take risk, let's get things moving, let's, let's create the energy. My job is to create the environment of success. So if we can say, right, we want to deliver 28,000 new homes over the next 18 years. We've got the Freeport coming that's going to unlock thousands of jobs, billions of pounds worth of investment. We've got a City of Culture bid where we're into the final four for UK City of Culture 2025. If we can win that new tourist economy, we've got our cruise passenger numbers, hopefully will grow from sort of two million upwards. Let's keep more of those people in Southampton. Let's restore our walls, which historic walls are some of the best in the UK and the most in the UK. Got tonnes of history from the Titanic to the Spitfire, to the Aviation Museum, our connection with the world, you know, we are a global port. We've been a port since Roman times. We've got people from all over the world that live in our city. Got so much going on and we're a dynamic waterfront city that offers something that actually is very limited in the UK. So if you look at Miami, you look at Singapore, you look at Hong Kong, Barcelona, those sort of waterfront, world-class waterfront cities, that's what we want to do in Southampton, you know, imagine coming up the waterway and seeing this beautiful, yes, taller, greener, built city environment in a cruise ship and docking. We'll build the National Spitfire Memorial, which will be 40 metres high in Mayflower Park, connected by water taxi. So you can go around, so you can go from Waltham to the city centre on a water taxi, you haven't got to drive. Quite fun, you know, in the evening, pop and have a drink or, so just really game change this place. Last week, I was in the south of France in Mipin, so the Global Property Event with some colleagues, talking about the region, talking about inward investment, why the south coast of England is, is a brilliant place to invest and grow. So all those components, like, like a start, and you'll know, you know, we're an oil tanker, we're a hugely successful economic engine. economic engine as a city and a place. But we sort of got into this, oh, well, it might be okay. And I'm like, right, let's come along, let's shake this thing.
Yeah.
Let's get it moving, let's unlock the potential and go, there's tons of risk in this. Is there? Well, actually, we're sort of pitching for things we might not get, but we'll grow along the way and we'll figure it out. And probably, and, and you're probably know this already, you know, the entrepreneurial spirit of mine of let's try things, let's figure it out and find the people on the way, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're, we're really doing that. Um, and I've tried to blend that practical requirement to deliver for people day in, day out and risk management with think big and start small and keep moving.
Yeah.
Because that's the key bit.
Yeah, absolutely love that. It's, um, it's inspirational. And I think that's where you get that right mix of entrepreneurialship, going and getting it done. Um, as I say, uh, my, one of my mentors, Rob Moore, says, start now, get perfect later. You know, going out and just getting that done and, and, and making things moving because that's, it's what creates the great infrastructure around Southampton. So, so what's the, what's the next year looking like for you? What, what's the plans for next year?
Yeah, so we've got elections in May, so hopeful plan is that we're re-elected and come back the other side, uh, with an increased team, that's the start point.
Yeah.
Um, uh, in terms of then, beyond then, um, obviously by the end of May, we'll know whether we've won UK City of Culture twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
Uh, our Freeport status, uh, should be signed off early summer to go live. Um, we've then got a huge amount of investment going on, so we've got the restas- restoration of the sort of historic walls, the monuments in the city tidying those up. We're really working on, um, mass transit solutions, so can we get trams? More rail in connecting the city, which will unlock tons of development potential sites.
Yeah.
Um, and the water taxi stuff is coming as well. One thing we really want to start doing as well, as, as a council supporting businesses, going, who are the top twenty, thirty, fifty businesses in the city that if we really focused supporting, we could grow them?
Yeah.
And they probably might be a few startups, but actually a lot of them will be existing companies.
Yeah.
And if we got them to add one or two employees extra and upskilled them, that would be a massive impact. Who are the businesses that we can bring to Southampton? So we're actively outgoing, right, who do we want to bring? How do we bring them? What are the things that they need so they can employ more people, open new offices? You know, from our point of view, we create our income through business rates, pay more business rates is great.
Yeah.
More money to invest in services.
Sure.
So all those sorts of things are going on. Um, but I think for, for me and my team and for the city, actually, we're on a, we're on a, a journey of constant growth, of understanding who are we, what can we do? And as you know, thinking positively, taking action and building confidence is a daily process.
Yeah.
And the city's doing that. You can see it sort of flexing its confidence. And winning UK City of Culture twenty five, twenty twenty five would really be about recognizing, you know, we're not a finished product, but by twenty five, we'll be a long way from where we are now. And we can shine a light on the things that are going on in our communities, our connection to the waterfront, our place in the world. And for hundreds into thousands of years of being a port.
Yeah.
That's why it's such a warm place.
Yeah.
Because we've been used to welcoming people and indeed, we will be doing the same in the next few weeks with people from Ukraine.
Yeah, love that, love that. So, um, setting on the theme of the podcast, what does fail forward mean to you?
Yeah, so I actually don't ever think there's, there is no such thing as failure.
Yeah.
What there is is learning.
Yeah.
Um, the failure to, the failure only becomes failure if you take no action.
Yeah.
Um, because the biggest thing that will ever inhibit us from achieving that that we know we're capable of, but don't believe we're capable of, is not doing anything at all.
Yeah.
Um, so fail forward really means to me of each day you become clearer about who you are, what your value is, and the more you're the more that river is in flow, the more it just flows. So it's much easier for me now to make progress than it was before. I put less effort into pushing things.
Yeah.
And more about working with people in, in flow and finding the right alignment. So actually, it's just progress, it's just life, it's growth, it's, 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 we're an organism that's growing every day, windows are opening, new opportunities coming. Our cells are dying and growing and it's evolution in it, in its, in its own right, in my opinion. So the more you can fast track that through, yeah, listening to this podcast, learning from other people, understanding who you are, being proud of who you are, accepting the things that you aren't naturally gifted at, starting to check in with your own consciousness, why do I think I need to be good at this? Well, someone told me. Or, or checking in with your own subconscious, which of course is the challenge.
Yeah.
Of all the things you've absorbed that you're not aware of. Um, and realising, you know, whoever you choose to be, you can be, and there is a place for you to excel and be successful in that person. And you don't have to justify it, you don't have to worry about other people's opinions, you don't have to worry about whether you can monetise it because it's purpose driven. You wouldn't be here if there wasn't a reason, in, in my opinion. And so that's what really fail forward means. It means that we can become the best version of ourself by fine tuning.
Yeah.
Artwork, isn't it? It's a tapestry, we're drawing this beautiful picture every day and every day we just keep doing it.
Yeah, absolutely love that. Yeah, I love the, I love the term trying to be the best version of ourselves and how we constantly trying to improve and evolve.
Hmm.
It's definitely the way we fell forward for centuries and, and the world, it's the, the evolution of, of time, isn't it? And the constant learning. So absolutely love that. So if anyone's listening to this podcast now, um, and is sat at home and they're feeling like everything's caving in, they're going through a tough time with their business, what bit of advice would you give them to keep carrying on?
Yeah, so I think there's, 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 there's several things. If you're sat at home feeling that, that chatter is just chatter.
Yeah.
So we are not our thoughts, and I know that's difficult for everyone, it's difficult for all of us. But I'll, we're condi- we've been conditioned to believe all that chatter. Actually, if you can sit in peace with yourself, don't try and stop the chatter. So accept that it's there, accept there's fear. But actually, just the first thing I find very helpful, and I get it all the time in my role, you know, there's new things I'm doing and the more, as, as you know, the more things you take on, the more the chatter comes.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't stop. But if you can allow it just to calm itself down, it begins to allow you to see things more collectively. But overwhelm is just our system going, oh, how do I handle this? The answers exist, the people that you need exist. But you, the bit you need to do yourself is to allow yourself just to sit back in the chair and go, I've got this. I don't know how, I don't know when, but I believe I am. And if you, even if you don't believe it, just stand in front of the mirror, sit there for a minute, just repeat yourself. Let it all flow, I've got this, I can handle it. It will calm the scenario down. And then you can begin to take some action in the right way. If you, you don't have to do that, if you just take the action, it will be fine, but you will take action you don't need to do because you're doing it based from a place of fear rather than a place of, I've got this. So the first thing we can do is condition our own mind to believe whatever the challenge is, we're greater than it, we but it might feel greater than us. The second thing is then, once we've got into slightly calmer position is, who are the people that can help? And if we don't know, ask. So I'm a great believer in the principle of if you ask, you receive. Ask, you know, if you, if you have a religious belief, ask for guidance from whatever your belief in something is. Ask from your better partner, other half, someone you meet in the street, whatever, there is someone that can help, you know? Drop me a message on LinkedIn or, 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 or social platform or yourself, Henry, or, or anyone in your network. The answer will come. But it's incredibly emotionally overwhelming and difficult when you're in that moment.
Yeah.
And I get that. But if you can, if you can do the initial step, the answers will come. And that's very simplistic, but it's the principle that underlines it all.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for that. So, um, it's been wonderful having you on today. If people do want to connect with you, what's the best way to connect?
Yeah, sure, probably LinkedIn's the, 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 the platform I use the most. Um, and then, you know, we can have a chat or, or send an email into my office from there, which I'll give you by uh, email if, but yeah, LinkedIn is the best, easiest platform, but I'm on, I'm on, I'm down with the cool kids on TikTok.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and Instagram and Facebook, but LinkedIn's the best one, drop me a message, happy to have a chat. Um, and you know, how can we help? Because that's what we're all here to do.
Cool. Have you got any final words you want to say to the audience?
I think I would just say to everybody, most of the things that you are thinking that are going to stop you are in your mind. And those are conditioned programmes, uh, deep, deep in here inside, we already know the answers, we know who we are, we know what we're capable of. Follow through on that and believe and commit before you know how and the rest will work itself out. But thank you for having me, Henry.
Amazing. No, you've been an absolute inspiration. I love your journey. It's so great to hear and hear what you're doing to inspire Southampton and move it forward and using your entrepreneurial business experience mixed with the politics, it's absolutely, um, fantastic. So thanks for coming, thanks for being on board. And thank you everyone for listening to the Fail Forward Podcast. If you've enjoyed what you've heard today, please like and subscribe on the channel that you've been listening on. And also share if you can with other friends on social media, it'd be fantastic to broaden the reach of this podcast. So the next episode, I'm going to be going into the four pillars of a sustainable business. So they are what I believe that you need to put into any business to help it create a successful business and stand the test of time. Thanks all for listening and I'll see you next time.